Hi.
Members, it's the appointed time and we formed a forum. Welcome members and non-members of the panel to the meeting. But then, non-panel members cannot take part in any voting. May I remind members that the panel will discuss and also make known our views to the administration on matters within our terms of reference. However, the police is now investigating these suspected cases of child abuse of the children's residential home. And so, we should avoid making too many comments on the cases. And I was suggested that the ex-formal staff of the children's residential home should be invited to the meeting. But then, the police have advised against doing so. Now, this is a special meeting. And then, I have also got motions proposed from Mr. Tan Kapiu, Mr. Michael Look and Mr. Chow Beck. And because this is a special meeting, I will waive the requirement for motion to reach the... to reach members no less than two days before the meeting. All right, let's invite the administration led by Dr. Lo Che Kung to join us now. The item is Surface Quality Monitoring of Residential Care/ Childcare Services. When Dr. Law makes his opening address, I will allow members to press the Request to Speak button because we have quite a large turnout today and time is limited. So please make our questions and answers short. We will discuss the paper and then we will deal with the motions. Dr. Law, over to you. Thank you. On behalf of the Hong Kong as our government, I'd like to discuss this matter with the panel. The administration attaches a lot of significance to protecting the interests and welfare of children. Can you speak closer to the microphone? To protect children from harm and abuse. The Children's Residential Home, CRH, under the Hong Kong Society for Protection of Children, is involved in a case of suspected abuse of the children therein. We are very concerned and saddened by the matter. We understand the community's concern. I would like to take this opportunity to report to the panel our investigation and also to receive suggestions from members. The Hong Kong Society for Protection of Children has submitted a review report in relation to the case of CRH that have been serious deficiencies in the day-to-day operation and training and supervision of CRH. They have failed the expectation of society. And they have promised to put in place a number of measures, including replacing the senior management and enhanced supervision and to try their very best to restore public confidence. The administration urge the HKSBC to implement these undertakings as soon as possible and to make sure that they can effectively protect the interests of children. And then, we have also got a review report on the various aspects of the HKSBC to decide whether it is suitable for further intervention by SWD. We note that the supervisory mechanism of the SWD has room for improvement. The SWD will enhance the breadth and depth of inspections to ensure childcare service providers are in strict compliance with the service quality standard of SWD and legal requirements and to ensure the effective internal control monitoring systems are in place. As for enhancing monitoring, we would like to explain to members possible measures to be put in place in the near and long term. For details, please refer to the paper. The LWB has according to the... has accorded priority to conducting a review on residential childcare and related services under the review report on enhancement of lump-sum grant intervention system. And we will include things such as surface targets and nature, surface performance standards and notionals, self-establishment administrative support, etc. We will task the Working Group on Children Protection under the Commission on Children to conduct a review with the target of completing it in March next year. And as for legislation, we are pressing ahead with the legislation on mandatory reporting mechanism of child abuse. Relevant professionals will have to receive sufficient training to ensure early identification and reporting of suspected child abuse cases. We hope that a bill can be submitted to the council in the first half of next year. And then, the Law Reform Commission has also published a report on causing or allowing the death or serious harm of a child or vulnerable adult published in September last year. We're considering how to take further recommendations. I think we must learn a lesson from this incident. We should review all the surface aspects of residential or institutional residential childcare services. But then, the law enforcement agencies are still investigating the case. There is no ruling out that there will be further enforcement action. And therefore, it is not appropriate for us to comment on individual cases. I ask for members' understanding. Thank you. Secretary. Twenty-seven members have raised their hands to ask questions or read out the order. Dominic Lee, Yong Hui Yan, Lu Chong Hong, Michael Tian, Tik Chi Yun, Elizabeth Quat, Yuen Wing Kit, Judy Chan, Regina Yip, Stanley Lee, Chan Ho Yan, Ah Man Yu, Lai Tong Kwok, Chow Siu Chong, Kenneth Leng. I will keep the second page to a later page. All right, all right, I think I should read out for time control management. Stanley Ng, Lam Man Kwong, Nelson Lam, Doreen Kong, Maggie Chen, Reverend Peter Douglas Coon, Tan Kapiu, Lydian Quat, Lam Siu Wai, Benson Look, Ken Ho Man and Shannon Betts. All right, each member will have four minutes for questions and answers. Mr. Dominic Lee, thank you. Now, this Society for Protection of Children is better called Society for the Abuse of Children. And it's not after more than a month that someone from the society came out to apologize and the supervisor and also the chief executive were sacked. Now, the secretary and also the SWD did nothing other than issuing statements expressing their shock. And the same was said just now. We haven't seen anything substantive done. So I'm sure many of us here have serious doubts regarding your monitoring system. Did you regularly check on the surface quality of these RCCs? I'd like to know what you actually do at inspections. Is it just as a matter of formality? The secretary said that the depth and breadth of inspections might not be sufficient. But you haven't told us what was on the pass and how you can review this system which has proved to be a failure. We're talking about children, aren't we? Secretary. Your written reply is even more laughable. You're going to invite the Working Group on Children Protection under the Commission on Children to monitor the review. And the target completion date is March next year. Is that real? Next March, will you still be around in March next year? So what do you expect children to do from now until March next year? Should they continue to be abused? Why haven't you give us a clear account? So I agree with Mr. Tan Kapiu. We should set up a working group under this panel so that we can investigate this matter in depth. Bureau. I hope you can give us a substantive and also comprehensive reply. Secretary, thank you. Since the SWD has received notice from HKSBC that there have been suspected child abuse, of course, the first thing we did was to ask the society to report to the police. Even before the notification, every day, the SWD has been sending people to inspect the premises to see what was happening. And then, a dedicated team was stationed to the CRH in the middle of January. Whenever there is a suspected case of abuse, we have an interdisciplinary team to consider the details and what is the best arrangement. So, we have given an account to the public. Perhaps the details were not in the headline and members might not have noticed the detailed description of our work in the body of these reports. Now, because time constraints, I can only say briefly that we have been doing this two areas in the past. On the quality of service, we read their reports and conduct surprise checks. Now, this CRH is under the relevant legislation. So we have license checks on a regular basis. And in the past, nothing of this kind was found. All right, members, please be concise in asking questions. And I hope the officials will do the same to allow more members to ask questions. Ms. Yong Hui Yan. As I said, this is a shame. The Society for Protection of Children has got these very serious abuse case involving so many staff members, close to twenty employees, including those from the management, have been arrested. They're trying to find out the reason. Why? We understand that there are sixty thousand hours of CCTV recordings waiting to be seen and looked into. Now, I think the service users, including parents, do not have confidence in this HKSBC. Have you considered setting up a new management board? People with professionalism and experience in running such homes to take over? So, to recommend on the way forward and how to handle children being... taking care of and their parents? I know that you have got an interdisciplinary professional team, but I'd like to know the number of children that are in hospital. There were reports that some children were hospitalized. I think they might have to be tied or restrained because they cannot take care of themselves and there is no one to carry out daily activities for them. And they have to be restrained in the best. I'd like to know the number of children that are in hospital and the number of children still being taken care of by the HKSBC. How can you continue to take care of the needs of children in hospital and in not in hospital and take care of their needs?
Thank you. Once we become aware of the incident, we have deployed social workers and clinical psychologists to get in touch with the children and the parents. There are still... let me check. Sixty? Director, please. At present, as at twenty-seventh of January, thirty-two children are still... were still hospitalized. Thus, the figure as at the twenty-seventh. Eight children were hospitalized. Subsequently, they were given other arrangements under the existing welfare plans. That's as at the twenty-seventh of January, thirty-two. For children still staying at the home, there are still fifty to sixty children as the children's residential home. Like the secretary said, after the incident, we have carried out multiple investigations and we have also deployed a team to make sure that the children at the home are adequately cared for. For those still hospitalized, treatments have been given. And we are going to make other plannings for these children, some supplements. What about the new commission? And have you got in touch with NGOs about the follow-up plan? We have considered plans such as inviting NGOs to take over or moving the children to suitable places. We have conceded other options. Having considered the situation and the condition of the children, we consider that the children still staying at the children's residential home are being adequately cared for. Mr. Michael Look. Now, about the abuse incidents of the HKSBC, it is beyond description. We are so shocked. It shows that the government's monitoring program is flawed. If the complaint wasn't made, we will not know this is happening at the home. We relied on inspection or inspectorate team to conduct investigation. But with the inspectors there, of course, the children care workers would care the children like their own. You didn't check the CCTV footages. The care workers would think that the government would not know. Many people are asking, why didn't you check the CCTV footages before? Well, what about from now on? Would you check the CCTV footages of other institutions? Inspection alone is not enough. And also, we have to reassure the public about the surface. People ask me, why did the chief... why did the CEO only resign after someone took over? And also, it is the deputy CEO who replaced the CEO. Or was the deputy CEO involved in the running of the home? If that's the case, then people don't trust him either. He is a senior member of the management. Was he aware of the malpractice at the home? It is not an individual case. There were... there were seventy cases. The number was so high. Unless you can prove that the vice CEO was not in... deputy CEO was not involved in the operation of the home at all. And why isn't the government taking over the operation of the HKSBC temporarily? Can't the secretary or the director assign someone to take over the running temporarily? As the member said, the deputy CEO was never involved in the management of the HKSBC. That's why the investigation team recommends the deputy chairman taking over the management. We are talking about a children's residential care home or a residential crash for children between zero and three years old. Under the law, we have a very high standard for these institutions. To replace the existing care workers with appropriate personnel, well, we have to find qualified staff as well. Currently, we don't have such manpower under the social welfare departments and other care homes. We have considered other options. However, it is not feasible to engage workers from the private sector to take over the care work. We know that the childcare sector is very willing to help. However, there is simply not the manpower to send in to replace the... to take up the operation of the care home. Please be brief, members. Mr. Michael Tian.
Thank you, Chairman. Secretary, I have received many calls in the past few days. They all asked me the same question. Would you invoke the privilege law to look into the matter? Well, I said we have to wait for the secretary's reply today. Well, whether we would invoke the Legislative Council powers and privilege ordinance to make an investigation, it really depends on your answer today. If you give us a strict answer, then I won't support it. If you are giving us a walk in the park, then I would consider it. You said you would deploy... you have deployed inspectors to the home regularly. I don't think they were doing it in an undercover manner. Say, in the retail sector, we have something called the undercover mission. So no one would know about the visits in advance. If the visit is pre-announced, then you cannot find anything. Well, no one would throw the kids around and abuse them when the inspectors were there. So the only way to do it is to check the CCTV footage regularly. So my question is, you have so many childcare services and outsourced childcare services. Did you direct your teams to check the CCTV footages regularly to ensure the service quality? Is that part of your standard? If you have done that, how regularly would you look at the CCTV footages? Chair, we didn't have such requirements. However, it will be put in place from now on. We will do random checking of CCTV footages. There are lots of cameras in a home and it keeps recording twenty-four hours a day. So we have to focus on footages to watch. Now, the police is watching sixty thousand hours of CCTV footage. So we have to ensure that this is a fiction in protecting the children. Then I don't understand. You have regular checks and you have sixty thousand hours of CCTV footages to watch? Well, do you seriously believe that you would be able to find something during the regular checks? You are such a clever person, secretary. It is unacceptable because we are talking about victims who can't make complaint themselves. They are children aged zero to three and their parents might be incarcerated. No one would pay visit. So the only way to go is to watch the CCTV footages. If not all, you have to watch some of it and then you would be doing your job. Honestly. Well, unless you change your mindset completely, otherwise, I will hold you accountable in my remaining tenure. So you said the HKSBC accepts that it has fallen short of the public's expectation. What about the social welfare department? Given that your inspection system is so flawed. Well, Chairman, I would not describe the inspection system of the SWD as child play. Actually, we have this practice for quite a long time. Please answer my question directly. Do you think the SWD has fallen short of the public's expectation? Well, if you're asking me about our past work, we have not been... we have not received such criticisms. I think the public is quite curious why this has happened without our knowledge. Next member, Dr. Tik Chi Yun. Chair, I have been a social worker for forty years. I have never seen anything like this. I don't believe the secretary has seen something like this either. This is a catastrophe. The department is too slow and the reports... according to the report, it was only on the seventeenth when you deployed teams to inspect the operation of the home. But it has taken place for more than half a month. And as other members said, the secretary and the social welfare department have not made an explanation to the public directly. Well, I have several questions for the secretary. Now, you are deploying a team to the service unit. How can you ensure that everything will be in accordance with your standards tomorrow... today, tomorrow and day after tomorrow? Is your current regime able to do that? And also, the home has devised a series of short to medium and long-term measures to improve its service. How can you ensure that it lives up to its promise? I agree with Dr. Law that it is not to the children's benefit to move them to other institutions. But I think we should only give the home three months probationary period. In the event that the home fails to live up to its promise, how can you hold them to account? And also, according to the paper, the social welfare department has a system to monitor the service of the home. However, it shows that there is obviously a loophole. Can you give us more specifics? Because the paper is not very specific about your measures. How can you ensure that there is a regulatory regime in place without affecting the operation of the homes? Thank you. I will invite the director to make supplement. Last Tuesday, when the chairman was elected, I immediately called the chairman of this panel to arrange for this meeting to explain to the public via this platform. We act at once. We did not delay. Once the chairman was elected, we immediately arranged for this meeting. And it wasn't that we sat on our hands until the seventeenth. After we became aware of the incident, we deployed a team to carry out inspection every day. They have met with the children and the parents to find out the truth and assess each and every case. Director, please.
The member asked whether we can ensure that what is done at CRH can comply with our requirements. Now, we have stationed... we've been stationed at RCH for a while and we're observing their daily operation. And according to observation, I think they can comply with our requirements and they are improving day by day. Our team doesn't just inspect the premises. The team has got very experienced professionals such as clinical psychologists. So they are observing the performance of the staff and also new staff deployed there by HKSBC. Can you ensure that they will comply with your requirements? Yes, for sure. And as for our change in monitoring, we will discuss with the sector. I think it can be seen by members that as the police said, such behavior would only take place for one or two seconds. So we may not be able to identify these cases just by looking at the CCTV recordings. Can you give us a written report? Certainly. All right, after discussing with the sector a feasible plan, we will give an account to the panel. Ms. Elizabeth Quat, now people call the society for the protection of children, society for the abuse of children. This goes to show that the public has lost confidence in this society. So if these children do not need hospitalization anymore, then they should be placed to other better homes or returned to unite with their families. The HKSBC still runs a dozen or so such centers. Have you been expecting each and every of these centers to ensure the children are free from abuse there? Now, according to the report of HSBC, children have been slapped on their faces and kicked to the floor and they described that as some rude behavior. Would you accept such a description? You're giving them tens of millions of dollars of subvention. On what basis do you give them this subvention? You do not see, you do not see their CCTV recordings and your supervision has got so many loopholes. On what basis do you provide them with subvention every year? Now, you are going to set up a working group to review such matters and the completion date is March next year. But from now to March next year, you still have to provide grants to this society. Do you think that is acceptable to the community? Is the government going to set up an independent working group to look into this matter, including whether there's been dereliction of duty on the part of the administration? Secretary, can you tell me whether your bureau and the SWD have been derelict in your duty? Will you set up an independent inquiry into this matter? If so, then there is no need for the council to set up such a select committee. Now, if you don't do so, I don't doubt the possibility of invoking Legislative Powers and Privilege Ordinance to look into the matter. Secretary, if I may, try to respond to the many questions asked by the member. Existing services to children there. Now, we believe these children can continue to be well taken care of. And as soon as we were aware of this matter, the SWD has sent people to relevant service units to understand the situation. So we are quite sure that such things would not happen in other service units of the society. As for whether an independent committee of inquiry will be set up, well, we have considered this. But the HKSBC has already set up an independent review committee. Now, if we were to set up a commission of inquiry, the membership would very likely overlap with that of the IRC of society. Now, these members have nothing to do with HKSBC. They are members of some of our advisory committees and they are distinguished personnel in society. So a lot of the details may involve the judiciary. So the IRC can only put an executive summary on their website. So, Secretary. So do you think that slapping kids aged O to three is just a bit rough? And then the IRC doesn't investigate into the behavior of the government? So you just tell me whether you're going to set up a committee of inquiry or not? Now, members have only seen the executive report but not the whole. Now, if such were only a rough behavior, we would not have, the police would not have intervened and with prosecution being contemplated. So I think the, they were just describing some rough behavior by other employees and then, as I said, the IRC set up by this society. Now, we trust the independence and also the composition of the committee.
Mr. Young Wingit, I'd like to follow up on the monitoring and inspection mechanism. Obviously, the system has failed otherwise because you have not identified these problems. The secretary said that you will continue to see the CCTV recordings but only part of them. Now, for those with ulterior motive, now if they can anticipate parts of the CCTV recordings you're going to view, then they will break the rule in other areas. So you should not just watch part of the CCTV recordings. You should alert them and then you should also monitor by means of watching the CCTV recordings. And you talked about discussing with the sector a monitoring system. This is unacceptable to me. I don't know whether the sector would only protect themselves. If that is the intention, you will not be able to monitor them. Dick Chin is looking at me. I think he may disagree with me. But if you agree with the sector on a certain monitoring system, I don't think you can be effective. There are other service units being run by HKSBC. Will you review their operation as well? And what about service units by other organizations? Because we had, we have had cases of elderly abuse. So you have to watch the CCTV recordings. You must use technology and you need ways to watch all of the recordings. Otherwise, your system is bound to fail. The use of AI to help our work is one of the possible way forward. But you know, if we use AI to differentiate whether somebody is just carrying a child or hitting a child, well, there needs to be further development in AI. We have a few thousands of service units. We must have an effective way to monitor the service quality. As regards how we monitor and inspect these service units, yes, this has to be done. But the more important thing to do is to prevent. If you rely on supervision, inspection and monitoring to prevent such things from happening, this is already undesirable. And that's why we have to review the whole services. Got to do with the staff establishment? Has it got to do with the size of the organization? In the nineteen nineties, we break up large centers into small group children's homes. The purpose was to avoid some of the problems associated with institutional care. Indeed, it has been a while since this service area has been reviewed. As I said, well, it has been a while and I think it's not, it's not just about having a rather unscrupulous worker or superintendent with poor supervision or a lax CEO. There must be other things, other underlying reasons. Now, I'm not an expert in this area, but if we do a literature review, we will know that such child abuse cases are quite often before they become a scandal. This goes to show that we were not vigilant at all in the past. So we have to do it better to ensure that now service workers, I think they started off committed. But how have they degenerated into the current stage? I think we have to explore the reasons behind it. It's not about just asking tens of thousands, tens of people reviewing the CCTV recordings of service units to tackle the problem. Ms. Judy Chen, as we all know, children who have to stay in CRH are because they do not have a caring family and that's already the first harm they suffer. And then they have to put up with slaps on their face and hair pulling and being kicked to the floor. And I think over thirty children have to pass the, spend the Lunar New Year in hospital for an indefinite period of time. And I think this is the third round of injury they suffer. So can you tell us how long are they going to stay in hospital? Do they have to wait for weeks and months before they can be properly taken care of? Everyone in Hong Kong is concerned about their situation. Yesterday, the commissioner for the police said that there was a sixty percent increase in the number of child abuse cases. So perhaps the CRH incident is just the tip of the iceberg. Is exactly why I wrote a letter to the chairman yesterday asking that this panel suggests to the House Committee, we set a working group on monitoring the protection of children. We may not have enough time to discuss that today. But the SLB and SWD gave the people, gave the community the view that's been acted too slowly. But we cannot afford to give this impression to the public. We must show people that we should do our utmost, what is within our ability to protect our children. I don't think this motion will spend too much time and most a few minutes. I hope we can put this proposal to the House Committee at this meeting dated the eleventh of February. Regarding the arrangement for the thirty-odd children, I defer to the SWD. Now, if they're fit for discharge, we'll try to identify suitable placements for them as soon as possible. As I reported, when conditions were ripe, we had discharged them. What is your mechanism? Can you have some arrangements to expedite the process? That depends on the circumstances of each case. Of course, the most suitable arrangement is for children to be returned to the parents. But in some cases, our parents are not free. So now if things are in order, if the preparation is ready, we will arrange for these children to be discharged as soon as possible. Is it true that it takes seventy-nine months before you can find a new institution for them? I don't think we will take that long. Our plan is to complete the discharge within a few weeks. Ms. Judy Chen suggested that a working group should be set up. Yes, that has been received. Now, this is a special meeting. The House Committee will wait until all panels have had the first meeting before it decides on select committees or subcommittees to be set up. So we will wait a while and I think we won't be too late for that. Thank you.
Chair, I'm not going to speak too much. I just have a few questions. Paragraph five, six and seven, you said the Child Care Centre Advisory Inspectorate under the SWD is responsible for the registration and inspection of RCCC and RSCCs. Inspectors conduct regular surprise inspections to ensure that these institutions comply with the statutory requirements. Can you give us the statistics? How many inspections, how many rounds of inspection have been carried out? Do you have an inspection record for the children's residential home or the children's crash under the HKSBC? I don't think we should only look into the management of HKSBC. We have to investigate whether the SWD has dereliction of duty. And you said you would make random or surprise inspections of visits. Have you done that? It wants the figures. There must have been someone who has failed to discharge the duty about the factual issues. According to the paper, the Child Care Centre Advisory Inspectorate would carry out a random or surprise checks. In the case of the children's residential home in the past year, there were five or six visits. That means once every two months. Like the paper said, in the inspection, we would check the staffing, space and layout, safety measures and quality of care, et cetera. Our inspectors would also observe the daily behaviors of the children. So the inspection is not limited to hardware. The daily interaction between the children and the staff would also be inspected. For suspicious cases, we would immediately follow them up. Paragraph eight, under the lump sum grant subvention system, there are inspections. That's inspection conducted from a corporate's perspective. We would check the compliance of requirements under the funding and service agreements. We would check the documents and we would interview the childcare workers and service users to check whether they are living up to our standard of service. For the children's residential home under the HKSBC, they are regulated by both, by both requirements. So that's how our inspection work. Well, you said there is an inspection every two months. Still, you did not identify the cases of abuse. Were your team blind? You said you would check the staffing, space and layout, safety measures and so on. So is that, is that just a check on paper? I really doubt the quality of service. And also, should there be an inspection by justices of peace? I don't think your inspection every two months is enough. Of course, there should be requirements under the funding and service agreements. Still, the service targets are infants. So how can you improve it? Would you assign justices of peace to visit the care homes? The questions raised by members are valid. From this instance, we can see that despite our regular visits, like the police said in their press briefing, some acts only took place in a matter of one or two seconds. So despite the two monthly visits, these behaviors were not caught. That's why we have to make sure that in future, the inspection and monitoring is effective. We will be happy to discuss with members and different sectors. For example, using innovation technology or assigning justices of peace to pay visits. We will value your input. Mr. Stanley Ng.
Well, having heard the SWD's reply, I now understand why that was a problem. On the sixteenth of January, we received the sixteen-page interim report.
On the sixteenth of January, we received the sixteen page, sixteen page interim report. Well, I think this is just a letter of apology. Of course, now everything has come out, they are apologizing. The commit, the investigation reports did not cover the role of the government. I think the social welfare department has its role to play as well. Well, Director, those um childcare workers, are they still working in the children's residential home? Do you, don't you think they should, their registration should be revoked um at once? Plus, there's still um a criminal investigation ongoing. About legislation, paragraph eighteen, the administration said it would take forward the legislation on mandatory reporting mechanism of child abuse. But you will only submit a bill, introduce a bill into the legislature in the first half of next year. Or in the past year, the number of child abuse cases increased exponentially. The Commissioner of Police said last year there were one thousand two hundred and thirty-two child abuse cases, an increase of sixty percent year on year. Legislative work cannot wait. Can you speed up the work? The SWD has done a sloppy job, so can you improve by legislating this piece of legislation immediately rather than wait until next year? You said the HKSPC would accept the report, but would you, will you revoke or cancel the registration of this institution? The public has lost confidence in this institution. Is it still in a position to provide social welfare services to the public of Hong Kong? About legislation on mandatory reporting, the intention is requiring swift reports once an incident has happened. Otherwise, it would be a criminal offense. The core issue is that we have to have a training mechanism. Otherwise, the people would just report and any case of suspicions, wasting resources, drawing investigative resources away from cases warrants investigating. And then the real cases would be delayed. So we are talking about not just legislative work, but the training as well. And also, many professions are involved. The guidelines for some professions must be amended to um curb with the change. Under some guidelines, there is a confidentiality mechanism. So we have to take care of all these. We are not just talking about one profession, but some ten professions involved. So we have to be very thorough in drafting the bill. When we have any preliminary ideas, we would come back to the panel for your views. Chair, I think the secretary is just um, just um beating around the bush. Of course, it is difficult, but still, you have to do it. You fail to um to monitor the organization. That's why it happened. Well, I think we have more chance to talk about the legislation um front. Thank you, Mrs. Stanley Ng. Um, Miss Rebecca Chen. Thank you. This is a, the HKSPC has become a society for the abuse of children. Everyone in Hong Kong is saddened by this. I think these, I think how the secretary is handling the issue um gives us the perspect, perception that he is shielding or protecting the society. Why don't you revoke the registration at once? Especially in my previous replies, we have to consider the feasibility of each option. If it is feasible and if it is, if it is in the interest of the child, we would not hesitate to do it. In short, revoking the registration of the society would deprive many children from um being given adequate care. So that's not the best option. Chair, the, in the, the, according to the interim reports of the investigation on the HKSPC, the childcare workers are, have developed a habit of abusing the children. The management was aware of it, but they never intervened. It was not individual, an individual occasion. It was a habit. The society receives eighty-eight million dollars per year. But would you allow these service units to continue to operate under a license because you can't find a replacement for them? As mentioned in my other replies, since um becoming aware of the incidents, we have intervened. At this stage, we believe that the children are being adequately cared for. Our judgment is remaining as the home is the best option for the children. Secretary, these are children between zero and three. You think this is the best option? Me, as a legislator and as a parent, I think this is the worst choice. You are condoning an organization to commit such a crime and you are not revoking its license. This is unacceptable. Dr. Law, you said you are not an expert in this field. Well, on the seventeenth of um December, members of the public took videos of childcare workers slapping the children and pulling their hair and they made a complaint. Well, as the Secretary for Labor and Welfare, did you direct the society to call the police? But when the news come to light, all that was done. According to the police, on the seventeenth of December, when the case came to light, it was only after five days when the HKSPC made a report to the police. And a, and a press conference was convened on the eighth of January. On the, on the first of January, some half of the CCTV footage was submitted to the police. In this interim of half a month, did the secretary do anything? Why were the footage just submitted so late? But when we were aware, when we became aware of the incidents, we directed the society to make a report to the police. And on the second day, we deployed a team to carry out investigation and visit the child, children as the society. Well, Secretary, according to the press release of the police, when the case was reported on the seventeenth of, when the case came to light on the seventeenth of December, the report was made by society on the um uh five days after the eighth of January. Well, when we have foreign domestic helpers abusing children at home, we would make a report immediately, or not to the seventeenth, when the police was involved. When an anonymous complaint was made, we need to check the CCTV footage. And then the social welfare department would be reported, it would be informed, and then we became aware of the situation. Well, because of the tight schedule, I hope members can limit the question and answers within four minutes. Uh, Mr. Frankie Ng. Secretary, the thirty-two children still hospitalized. Many of them can be discharged. It is because there is no service available, available for them. That's why they are staying at the hospital. They have been staying for weeks because there is no care for them. Some members asked whether the SWD would take over them. Well, you said you don't have manpower. Well, I think um there is simply no manpower for carrying children as need between zero and three. Well, Dr. Law, do you think that your manpower planning has gone wrong? When will we have an alternative institution for care for children between zero and three? During Chinese New Year, will you pay a visit to these children? They, they are too, they are too scared to meet any strangers. There was one child who, who uh fall, who fell asleep while sitting. Would you visit them?
Secretary. Yes, this kind of service hasn't been reviewed for many years. So uh in the short term, we cannot have a new service unit, nor is it possible to find an alternative service unit immediately. In twenty eighteen nineteen, we increased the manpower ratio and added resources to these services. The consultancy study back then focused not on residential care but daycare. The proposal was to ask the administration to gradually increase manpower ratio. So in twenty eighteen nineteen, we took the first step. Now, for uh the manpower ratio for those between three to twelve, it was from one to ten to one to eleven, so to two from a ratio of one to eight to one to six. That was the first step. The analysis back then was to continue to improve services. We have to gradually in, increase manpower and training. So we will continue to review the area as regards whether I should visit these children. I still have reservation at this moment. I don't think that, given the pandemic I have, the urgent need to obtain the approval for the hospital authority for visit, for visits. Any other follow-up? Mr. Li Tong Kwok. Thank you, Chair. We're talking about people who are mentally incapacitated to take care of themselves. They are kids below three years old. Now, in twenty fifteen May, in a Taipu um home of the rehabilitation home in Taipu, there was elderly abuse. And then uh there was a breach of, there was also a Cambridge um home, and then an autistic adult jumped to his death. And then this panel held a meeting afterwards on how SWD monitored such homes. In paragraph eleven and paragraph fourteen of the minutes of paper, uh it was said that there would be surprise visits and CCTV installed. Now, in paragraphs seven and eight of the papers submitted by the administration this time, uh it is almost identical. Understand that the SWD has got a licensing and monitoring unit. There is an assistant director leading a team of over hundred to carry out the relevant duties. Now, it's been so many years since twenty eleven, and yet we still see a repeat of such unfortunate events. My question for the director of social workers, whether your licensing unit has been derelict in their duty. How are you going to review the situation? I agree that this incident has exposed deficiencies in monitoring. Regarding the monitoring of elderly and homes and homes for the disabled, we have increased inspector manpower and enhanced manpower management. Not long ago, I went on a compliance visits and inspections together with colleagues. Now, in, and, and in a home, you can imagine various aspects, drug management, manpower management, et cetera. So each and every inspection has to be in-depth. It takes almost a day to complete one home. We have to check records and paper as well. It's true that we have dedicated staff to do this. And in the past, we mainly focused on homes for the disabled and homes for the elderly. They number over a thousand. This time, we're talking about RCSS and RCCS, we agree that manpower for this area is um not strong enough. We will consider enhancing our establishment. And in terms of monitoring and manpower deployment, we have to boost these areas. This is not just about competence or ability, rather, this is systematically how you supervise. Now, you might have gone through a lot of checklists and done a lot of paperwork. But the most important thing is people who are incapacitated, are they being duly cared for? We have seen major deficiencies in a few incidents. So it's not just about um nominal supervision. The question is how you really protect them. All right, Mr. Chow Siu Chong. Paragraph nine of the paper says that since the incident, uh the SWD has taken altogether six follow-up actions. Of course, it's about enhancing supervision and enforcement. Of course, these things have to be done, but they look rather routine. What is the root of the problem? Have they reviewed in-depth our whole monitoring system? Has the SWD conducted some in-depth review? The ILC by the society has been endorsed by the SWD and we also endorse that ILC report. I think things have gone wrong throughout in the operation of the home. But what about the SWD's supervision and inspection? They failed to spot those problems. I think that is the fundamental issues. Otherwise, what's the point of having these six measures? Are they going to repeat these measures when another service unit has gone wrong? So we must review the whole monitoring system. Secondly, manpower planning for childcare services. Uh now, I'm not defending the childcare workers of this particular service unit. But then the ILC report has exposed some areas for our consideration first overloaded childcare workers. And I was shocked to read that those new recruits that are caring, they were told by senior colleagues that they should not uh treat the children so and so caringly. For instance, instead of trying to sue the children, they should use corporal punishment to um treat them. So you must review the whole system, including the method of resource deployment under the lump sum grant system. Uh, have we devoted enough resources to frontline staff under the LSGSS? Thank you. Yes, we agree to the directions you mentioned. Yes, we should review the manpower ratio. In particular, for kids aged two to three, the manpower ratio of one to eleven is still on the high side. Although we have improved it from one to fourteen, but as I said, it is proper for us to improve the manpower ratio gradually. And then because of the pandemic, I think something has um aggravated the situation. Very often, childcare services rely on volunteers to a large extent. So many service units have ten, over a thousand volunteers to help take care of these children. If you have been, if you have visited these childcare centers, you know that the kids really like to be carried. Volunteers enjoy visiting these children because these children lack physical contact usually, and therefore they welcome being carried by volunteers. Now, because of the pandemic, I think these service units are under pressure because in the past, a part of the workload was shared, was shared by volunteers. And I think things together have caused the current situation. Mr. Kenneth Lo. The time when we heard the news was at Christmas Eve. And we had a rather unsettling Christmas Eve. Now, we're saying that we encourage people to raise Now, we're saying that we encourage people to raise children. Then you must have proper childcare services. But the kind of services we have here is not going to encourage people to raise a family. And then over thirty kids aged between ten and forty-four months had acute diarrhea. And it was not the SWD, but Department of Health which came out to review this situation. So perhaps SWD did, did it ring a bell for the SWD? When they heard that news, did they ever wondered whether things were wrong? And this manpower ratio of one to six. Now, we talk about kids or babies aged zero to two years old. I have two and a kid, two and a half years old at home. I won't be able to cope with two, not to mention six. So you really have to review the workload of the childcare workers and whether the, the job itself provides dignity and whether you have given sufficient training to CCCs, CCWs, so that there is promotional prospects. They can only treat infants properly. If they are happy with their job, they should treat infants as infants and should not handle them roughly. Yes, I agree with you. Manpower arrangements were important. In the last term of the council, when we announced the consultancy study on childcare services, members had views. Some said that the manpower ratio from one to eight to one to six is not good enough. Some said perhaps the ratio should be one to four, one to two. But then many CCWs have been arrested by the police. Some have left. So it's not easy to recruit enough staff with the relevant qualifications and training to take up the job. So things have to be improved. And the future direction is to work on this. Any follow up? If not, the next member. Well, even in January, we already knew that kids in CRH had some problems. There's over thirty of them suffered from acute arthritis. So did you go and check whether there were problems? Well, in childcare center, whether it is a residential or daycare one, the first thing is to inform the Department of Health and also the SWD when there is an outbreak. Because the Department of Health would have to check whether evacuation is needed or isolation is needed. That is some, it is for the Department of Health to respond at once. Mister Stanley Ng. These children are innocent. For various reasons, these children need to be taken care of at a residential care home. And I think the mistake here is unpardonable. Our social value is to take good care of children, ensure that they are free from abuse. This is a social value. And then this situation has gone on for a while. Culture of child abuse has already taken roots in this society. And it's hard for us to find out the underlying cause. And in the report, we do not see any review of this problem. So the whole system, from the SWD to the service provider, the whole system has failed. And yet, there is nothing in the report to tackle this failure.
Let's say if there is a fire in the building, we would, we would check whether the fire services facilities in the building are working fine. Yes, we are relying on this system, but we have to review on where the system has gone wrong. How is the social welfare department handling complaints about abuse? Why was the social welfare department unaware of the incidents for so long a time? Of the massive amounts we are spending on childcare services, how much has gone to the prevention of child abuse? It seems that the report is, is self-conflicting in itself. You said the, there is a habit of abuse in the, among the workers of the children's residential home. However, you still consider it suitable to care for the children. So why do you have confidence for them? You think they have a problem, but you are still allowing them to take care of the children. So you haven't answered our question in that you are not solving, resolving the root cause of the issue that is our system. So I think the secretary has not addressed the root cause of the issue. So please, let's invite the secretary to give us a response. Chair, as mentioned just now and in the paper, once we became aware of the incidents, we immediately carried out investigation visits. And we talked with children and parents. And we decided to deploy a team to a station as the home. We think at present, it is the best option to go. And the children will be taken, will be in good hands at present. As legislative council members, I think members would understand that we have to fight for the resources to provide service. We can't have a situation where we have an institution and all the staff there are idling. And we are sent, and all the children are sent elsewhere. That's, that won't happen. We have a shortage of service places. Several children can be reassigned to other institutions, but not for the majority of them. That's because of the limitation of the, of the service places. It's not just that we need a room to house the children. We have a strict requirements under the law. Mister Lemon Kwong. Thank you. I don't think anyone would find this case acceptable. Now, after the investigation and after the, after the culprits are held accountable, whether the children will be left with the children's residential home, the government has not answered us. There is a culture in the institution. The workers know that there are CCTV cameras, but still they are slapping the children. Like other members said, for well-intended staff, they would, they would be lectured by the old hands. So this is not an individual problem. This is the problem of the institution. You have to rehouse the children to other institutions. And about the role of the SWD, back in two thousand and fifteen, abuse cases were identified from elderly care homes. In year two thousand and eighteen, the ombudsman conducted an investigation. And they criticized the SWD's insufficient inspection. Now, the SW said you have deployed more people to inspect elderly care home. Now, the situation has repeated itself in the children's residential home. So on inspection, would you check the inspection record and identify whether there was a disciplinary issue among the inspectors? If not, is it because of lack of training? Children between the age of zero and three, and they cried. Was it because of abuse or was it because of the, they, they were upset? Were the inspectors trained to distinguish the difference? And you said you take a zero tolerance attitude towards abuse. So besides the HSPC, which you review the CCTV footages of other children's care home and identify and pass cases. I don't think we should put them in the past. We have to investigate and find out what has gone wrong. Director. On the question whether the children still hospitalized would be returned to the children's residential home, that's one of the options. As we said, we have confidence that the home can continue normal operation. As some members mentioned, it is not beneficial for the children to stay in a hospital setting for a prolonged period. So that's one of our options. However, we will not just look at the situation of the HSPC's residential care home. We will discuss the welfare plan with the parents. On the monitoring by the SWD for pre-primary residential homes in the past, maybe it was indeed that our inspection was not comprehensive and regular enough. So thank you for all your suggestions. We will improve our regime. Secretary. According to the recommendation, recommendations made by the investigative report or concerning those recommendations, the HSPC has accepted them all. I think the situation will improve. We have approached other NGOs to help, but they also think this is very difficult. Because if the management doesn't change, then it is very difficult to provide help. Now that the management has seen a change, I think other NGOs will be willing to help. And according to the reports, all the managements will be replaced, but it takes time. The organization takes time to fill up all the vacated positions. After the replacement of management, I think the reputation will improve. And I think people will come to help. Secretary, according to us, Chair, according to us, the director of the residential home has resigned. A new director has taken position. And we look forward to cooperating with him or her and improve the situation. Professor Nelson Lam, secretary and director, good health to you, but not so much so for the children. We have to care our elderly people as well as our young. Well, maybe you think the accountants, my profession, don't know how to take care of children. Well, I am an exception. Because all along, my mother has been caring for others' children. When I was taking examination, the child was crying day and night. Well, I wouldn't go and slap him. Well, that's our obligation. That's our duty. That's, we cannot see it as a job. Oh, sorry for being emotional. First question, has the secretary read the interim report dated the twenty sixth? If you have, you might have noticed that this is a play of word. They are excusing themselves. They use, it uses the word infants generally. But when it comes to abuse, it uses the word child. Later on, a, an English report will be released. Well, I believe that the persons interviewed speak Cantonese. So I wonder why you still trust that this is an independent report? Well, you did not, you did not identify the instance with the visits. Well, when I delivered the mask to the children, I, I only visited them one, once in three months. But still, I could identify problems with them. They, they look dreary and they look dull. And like Mister Stanley Ng said, it is an institutional problem. The bad work culture would be passed on to the newcomers. Still, we are putting our faith in this home. It has got one hundred million dollars from the SWD. But the major income is, the major funding is from the Education Bureau. This is my analysis. The home got another one hundred million dollars from the Education Bureau. The major source of funding is still from within the government. Is it because it is not entirely under the SWD's control? That's why we, we are seeing these institutional issues. Well, looking forward, this institution is run by professional social workers and nurses and so on. But with these experts, we still have these problems. What about other institutions under the SWD? Maybe after your visits per two months, you would identify more problems from other institutions. Please be brief, secretary. Well, there were a lot of hypotheses. Well, in short, we will continue monitoring the other organizations. This is not an individual issue. They are deep-rooted problem underneath. Still, I don't believe that this is a prevalent trend among other service providers. I've talked with other service providers. Everyone told me they were saddened by this. They would review their own service quality. This incidence does not only affect one institution, but the entire sector. Everyone wants to work together to rebuild the trust of the public. Thank you. I'm pleased to hear this. So the secretary takes the same attitude. Like the members, we would work for the benefits of Hong Kong's public. Thank you. And next. Sorry, the speaker is not coming through the mic. Sorry, the speaker is not coming through the mic. Sorry, the speaker is not coming through the mic. Mister Ring Kong, thank you. According to cap two, three, two for three, the childcare services ordinance, the director or the inspector has the duty to inspect and regulate childcare centers. There are only six sessions, six sessions under the ordinance. However, inspection for, inspection of childcare centers takes an entire session. Obviously, it is a major session under the law. With power comes responsibility. Director, doesn't mean that the director has not discharged his duty or power empowered under the ordinance? Now, the CCCAI team, they are responsible for inspecting the childcare centers. How many people are there in this team? I'm the twentieth member asking question, but still I have, I haven't heard an answer. Is there any night visits? What about Saturdays and Sundays? The secretary said there are many things to look for during the inspection. There were five inspections carried out for the children's residential home last year. So does the inspection take a full day? And what about the report? Is it a written report? Has any problem been identified in the reports from the visits to children's residential home? For emotionally unstable children and children from problematic families, are there specific requirements in terms of manpower and quality and standards? And every year, the SWD is providing an additional ninety-two million dollars for boys or girls' home and children's care home and so on. So where did the money go? Among the ninety-two million dollars, how much was given to the childcare, children's residential home for strengthening manpower? In the past three years, has this SWD issued a warning letter to the children's residential home? In the past three years, has this S W D issued a warning letter to the children's residential home? Because under the regulation, you have the power to do so. And on the paper, paragraph eight, you said you have internal regulatory mechanism. The S W said um inspection is not foolproof. So have you relied on the internal mechanism to uh check the children's care home?
Lastly, while I understand that some uh employees have been sacked, but then uh this setting is just the same. I'm sure many children um have some uh trauma. So uh have you done any psychological assessment to see whether uh children have been traumatized? Now, uh now, if I remember correctly, there are four members in the C C C A I, well, uh the assistant uh directors here or the deputy directors here. Now, but we don't have a lot of data uh here. And then uh the method of inspection is exactly one of the areas we should review. And as for uh the inspections, as I explained, apart from observing their hardware, we also observe the children's interaction uh with staff. And if we uh spot any uh abnormality, we will uh conduct an in-depth investigation. In the past few years, no warning letters have been issued. This is because in our many inspections, we did not see anything um abnormal. And uh inspections uh do not just take place at a particular time. Uh it can uh uh the timing is random. And uh it can be done at any time of the day. It's now of four oh two. We have eight members waiting to ask questions and we have to deal with motions. So I will extend the meeting to four forty-five. Miss Maggie Chan, thank you. The R C H incident shows that the H K S P C, the S W D and the L W B have entirely failed in monitoring their situation. Now, I think they don't even know uh where the problems lie. They want to take over the R C H, but they don't have manpower. They uh want to discharge the uh children, but there is nowhere to place them. More ironically, still, the former CEO of the C R H before and after the incident is a member of the Commission for Children, which is uh hmm tasked to protect their children. So I'd like to know whether you will ask the relevant former CEO to step down or will you uh uh will you uh sack him or her? Well, she has already tendered her resignation. So uh it was uh something passive, all right? The S W D is very passive. You S W D did not found, did not find out anything wrong with C R H. And as for the resignation, when will it take effect? Now or later? How come in our monitoring system, we haven't taken immediate action while uh the person involved is a member of the Commission of Children? Uh because we only report received a report last week and then I had communicated with the former CEO who have already tendered her resignation. So uh the government has responded too passively and too slowly. And it's not just about C R H. The administration fails to monitor itself and uh isn't aware of the gravity of the matter. So you have not issued any warning to C R H? And because there's been nothing wrong with C R H, what does that signify? That means that there is some problem with S W D. And I'd like to know whether any investigation or warning letter has been issued with respect to H K S P C. Well, as I said, no warning has ever been issued to C R H. No, because of time constraint, my question is not about C R H, rather the other service units of H K S P C. Uh none, according to my impression, but I can confirm later. This is so disappointing. This is such a big matter and they haven't immediately reviewed the whole organization. The policy address says that the government is going to legislate to require mandatory reporting of child abuse. I'd like to know whether the administration is going to set up a hotline at once? Or long, no, no, well, are you going to set up this hotline? We already got one. Yes, our hotline can receive such complaints and follow up at any time. Thank you. Uh the Reverend Canon Peter Douglas Coon. Uh as we are know, members of the public are very concerned about this matter. Allow me to describe the whole thing as a P R disaster. Because it seems that uh no consideration has been uh made on how to restore public confidence. If it had been uh decided that an independent committee of inquiry will be set up, then there is no need for this discussion. The administration might think that they've already done something, but uh from uh the public's point of view, uh there are come the um the uh independent review committee of the society is very different from one conducted by the administration. Although the government said that the there is likely to have an overlapping of membership. And as for uh the uh superintendent, so you told us that uh superintendent, a new superintendent has been hired. I think it's better if you uh place a superintendent there. Because the crux of the matter is to restore public confidence. Thank you. Of course, we have to consider all options. But members know how much time it usually uh takes for the administration to set up a commission of inquiry and also for it to operate. Whereas for the I R C by the society was able to submit a report within a matter of uh weeks and then that period of time won't be enough for the government to set up the committee. So um really, these members have nothing to do with the case. And there is an consultancy firm assisting to carry out the review. So I think we should look at the reports of the I R C objectively. It is trustworthy. And it's not the best approach for the administration to duplicate uh the uh efforts and set up our own committee of inquiry. Of course, uh we should review our monitoring work and if we have any outcome, we will report to the the to the panel. Yes, I understand your point about uh speed, but as I said, right from the beginning, it is a P R disaster. Since the I R C was commissioned by the society, then as pointed out by some members uh in the choice of diction and uh whether uh the um person concerned should be sacked or allowed to resign on his own, I think it would be um it would help the un- the uh public understanding if uh the administration has its own inquiry. As I said, we have no intention to do this at the time uh for the time being. Because the I R C is carrying out a second stage of work and we do not want to um disrupt their work. All right, you they have already employed a new superintendent. Have you considered sending your own superintendent? I'm sure uh this position is responsible for the day-to-day operation of the home and uh the public has doubts with regard to the um competence of the home. Well, uh we have stationed a team there and our support to the home would include support for the work of the new superintendent. Mister Tang Kapiu, first question, some factual questions. Do thirty odd infants that are still in hospital, have you done any physical and psychological evaluation? Uh have any permanent harm been done? If not, where will you do it? If you have, when will you announce the details? Oh, it may not be appropriate for us to announce the details, but then uh we have already done the physical and mental evaluation of the kids. But when are you going to announce the findings? Uh well, if uh it uh involves uh the um facts of the case, I think it will be um discussed during trial. All right, the case was reported by neighbors. Outdoors, people can see it, but then indoors, you can only rely on CCTV. So would you say that uh the uh extent of abuse would already be lighter outdoors when uh it's more visible? I understand that members are very interested in details of the case, but then they involve a future uh judicial action. So I don't think it is appropriate to comment on them now. I think the report of the I R C review, not just systematic mistakes, but systematic um commission of offenses. Now colleagues would remind one another not to uh overdo it or not to uh be so outranges when supervisors are around. And then they are condoning one another. The government is spending a lot of money on this society. Why should the government continue to spend so much on this service unit? Now, in the paper, uh the government said that they will send a team of professional staff to help them. And then uh they will be allowed to run the home again independently once things are sacked. I think, why don't you find a replacement? Because for staff working at uh C R H, they will feel um labeled. Uh they will feel labeled by the whole society. So why don't you deregister the R C H? Or are you waiting for some report to come out first? I can't be more concrete in answering this question because, as I said, we have considered all options. Our judgment right now is still that the current arrangement is the best for children receiving care. Now, if there were a more appropriate arrangement, we would not hesitate to choose it. Now, you allow those infants stay in uh such um scandalized place? The infants were subject to corporal punishment. It is said in the Reverend Ordinance that corporal punishment uh was illegal. And that you are still giving them tens of millions of dollars to um look after this infant. I don't believe that there can be no replacement. So when are you going to remove the registration of this home? As I said, if there were a better choice, we would not hesitate at all to um do it.
Ms. Lily and Quoc, secretary. In the instance of um the H A S P C, do you think the S W D has to take a major responsibility? Legally and um in terms of administration, it is the S W D's responsibility. Since this is the S W D's responsibility and there are at least ten children suffering from malt treatments in the children's residential home where the director for director of social welfare is the um is the guardian under the Child Care Services Ordinance. And all cases are referred to social workers by the S W D. It is puzzling for the public that over the years, such a working culture has developed in the care home. Still, the social welfare department was not aware of it. Director. I can only repeat what I have said. In terms of um regulation, we have a regime established. Obviously, something has gone wrong uh where uh which has uh gone unnoticed by us. We will review and improve um our system. I will not um shy away from this question. Are you admitting that the S W D has derelict its duty in terms of um monitoring? These are not the words I would use. I think um this is, I think the public uh will has will have his opinion. If that's the case, why, how can you describe it otherwise? And also about the um the assessments of um the surface assessment um operation manual, that's the September two thousand twelve issue. Are the standards and requirements still applicable to um to our days? Are there any loopholes? Under the guidelines, you require the organizations to uh to report their own um deficiencies after the self-assessment. So don't you think that is a loophole? And also um surprise check, that's a loophole as well. I hope all the relevant measures will see improvement in the future. And also, all cases are being followed up by senior social workers, especially for infants. Maybe the S W D should investigate whether there is the reduction of duty on the part of the social workers under your management. Chair, about the regulatory regime I mentioned by the member, um well, we are open to ideas to improve the measures. As mentioned in my answers, in my previous answers, it is best to have an environment where the organization can improve its service quality on its own. And the social welfare department would be responsible for checking whether the organization can fulfill its promises and whether it is complying with all the standards and requirements. Obviously, as the director said, it seems that the system is supposed to be fine. However, the problems were unnoticed during the inspections and checks. So there is obviously something missing. So at this stage, I would not say that the S W D has derelict its duty. So should you take up your responsibility and uh improve the monitoring system of the S W D and protect the children? They are our, they are society's future pillar. You have to work for their benefits. We totally agree with um your points. That's why we will review our system. Ms. Lam So Wai, thank you, Chair. Secretary, like members said, the children's residential home system shows that the S W D's monitoring system has failed. There are five, there were five inspections per year and at once per two months. Still, no problems were found. Now, within three weeks, the Independence Commission has identified so many issues. So during the S Q S inspections conducted by the S W D, why were these problems gone? Why have these problems gone unnoticed? It is very unconvincing if you tell us you haven't identified these problems. It raises um the question whether um uh the departments and the ca- care home were collaborating with each other. Chair, um there is no evidence that um uh collabora- uh collaborative behaviors uh are identi- are identified during the inspection. And so far, we don't have such evidence. And so far, we don't have such evidence. Miss Lam, on the eleventh of January, I sent a letter to the. Departments requesting all the S Q S reports concerning the children's residential home. However, I only received a brief reply on the eighteenth. There was no direct reply. I am a social worker. I am concerned about the contents of S Q S inspection, especially section sixteen. Uh, about abuse, S Q S section five about training of staff. Will the departments give us the contents of every inspection during the past five years? And what's about the contents of training provided to the staff? So this is a problem about um the uh training uh for staff or the lack of it. Director, please. About the S K S inspection results. I don't have them with me. Generally, um when an inspection inspection has been done, uh we have documents recording the um the results. Well, uh we have to consider whether it is appropriate to make them public. Miss Lam, any follow-up questions? Chair, I'm worried that this is not a. Um, single incident of the children's residential home. I have doubts about the S K S inspections conducted by the social welfare department. S W D, uh can you um go back and check and give us a further. Uh replies? Yes, thank you. And uh from the independence report. I only see recommendations on reviewing the children's residential home and the H A S P C. I urge the government to review the S W D's. Uh deficiency in monitoring the care home. Thank you. It is mentioned in the paper. We would review the entire monitoring regime and make it more effective. With view to preventing, to preventing a similar incident from happening again. Uh, next, Mister Benson Look. Thank you, Chair. This paper is titled Surface Quality and Monitoring of Residential Childcare Services. So there are some four thousand words in the paper. Telling us how foolproof um the mechanism is and how smart the officials are. Well, we are talking about thirty-two children between the age of zero and three. Um hospitalized and some twenty uh staff uh were caught by the police because of abuse. Well, this paper only come about after all these. This is just um um a hindsight. In paragraph thirteen, it mentions. Uh stepping up surface monitoring and strict law enforcement. Um, paying more frequent visits. Well, the chairman of the uh Independence Investigative Commission, Mister Wong, said that the colleagues. Did not um remind each other and a culture of abuse was developed. Well, um with not reminding each other, according to our understanding, this is um uh shielding or protecting each other. Well, this is not an individual instance. So we have a group of black sheep doing all these things. So about your stepping up monitoring and law enforcement, how can we ensure? That the culture of protecting each other uh is tackled? Like other members said, um they are obviously um hiding their lawful behaviors when you can, when you conduct, when you conduct an inspection. Paragraph sixteen. Uh, you said you would nurture um awareness and attitudes of uh social workers. Of course, everyone engages uh in the, and youth business should be a genuine. So how can you, how can you nurture uh the right attitude uh and mindset among workers? Did you not do that before? Now, the Independence Investigative Commission, uh the members are comprised of um. Are the same people from the H A S P C. So does the administration agree with the investigative methodology adopted by the H A S P C? Have you um, have you looked at the um the source materials? Well, I think they have interviewed the people, but what about the source materials? Have you checked them? Secretary. On training, I defer to the director. On the report, yes, we have looked at the full report. The part released to the public is the executive summary. Some, some parts of the report are very sensitive. Generally speaking, in terms of the um. Problems reviewed uh by the investigation and the interviews, it shows um. What has happened in the past um pit, in the past and um what we can learn from it. Director, about the mindset and training of our staff. That's exactly an area uh where we have to deepen our effort. About knowledge and um and techniques, uh the certificates uh was granted many years ago. But um there should be continuing education for the um for the staff and also about the mindset. Are the childcare workers able to alleviate their uh their, the pressure? Um when workload is heavy, uh that's our target. Miss Carmen Ken, thank you, Chair. I think the public holds the same view on uh child abuse cases. We take a zero tolerance attitude. I think um. With the number of members present today, it shows the seriousness of the matter. I've been listening. Whether the administration is aware of the seriousness of the incident. A member mentioned about the possibility of invoking the Legislative Council powers and privileges ordinance. Well, L E G C O has lots of duty. We have to consider a lot of livelihood issues and also we have to. Consider the um manner and the attitude of the administration in handling this matter. So I urge the administration to consider. Um our opinions. Your responses are unacceptable. According to the service agreements, um you have the statutory powers to implement um. Im- im- implements uh corrective measures. Now you have um engaged a C C C A I to uh investigate the issue. And the reports will only be available uh in a year's time. You are generalizing the issue uh to a. Review report. That's unacceptable. So I. Chairman, can we? Invite a written reply from the administration to adjust the proposed uh rec- recommendations. So that we can consider whe- whether we would invoke the Legislative Council powers and privileges ordinance. And the incident shows the loophole in uh monitoring and the S W's, S W D admits. There is room for improvement. That's why the mandatory. Reporting mechanism is necessary, not just on abuse, for children, abuse of children. For abuse uh of elderly people and so on, we have to study um the possibility of a mandatory reporting system. And about the report, you said uh the recommendations are acceptable. With the premises that um effective internal governance and monitoring system is to be established under the children, under the H A S P C. It means that at present, the H A S P C has no, no such system. So how can you monitor it?
The third question is. The uh rectification measures you mentioned. Are you willing to tell us whether you're going to adjust them? So that we can um. Uh that can form the basis of our consideration whether the P M P should be invoked. Well. The review is one of our work. And uh how we improve the monitoring system is one thing. And now the most pressing matter for us is to ensure that the children are being given the best care. And therefore, as soon as we came to aware of the um uh matter in late last month. We centered in team to ensure that children are were given proper care. And then a dedicated team was sent to um. The uh C R H again in January. No, no, the question is whether uh you want administration or the L E G C O. To uh do the investigation to uh address the aspirations of the so of the community. Secretary, going to conduct the inquiry yourself? As I uh said to members, information or the report from the I R C is a useful reference for us. So the administration has no intention to set up an independent inquiry at this moment. And hope you understand that under the L E G C O powers and privileges ordinance. Uh, any um uh testimonies given uh by some persons in front of the council. Um, may uh exonerate or maybe uh in um in uh may not be admissible in court. So I urge members to think twice before invoking the uh L E G C O P M P ordinance. Now it's my turn. Regarding the uh administration's monitoring inspection, I think. It is a rather tragic. Now. We have had cases where uh a doctor had followed all the procedures. In treating a patient and the um the operation uh was a success. But then the patient has passed away. This is very unfortunate. This is a similar case. So in your inspection, you found that they have followed all the requirements. I'd like to know whether you have spotted any problems in the past. Perhaps there's something wrong with your procedures. So. Director, subsequent to the incident, I'd like to know whether you have met with. With uh staff of your um inspectorate and what they had observed during the inspection. Well, I have uh not um met these uh team members individually. But through their supervisor, I've tried to understand their work. So. They are following our procedures and protocol in a carryout inspections. And we have to check whether the uh procedures are um useful. And I think the um. Details of an inspection are very important. Our staff may be very conscientious in carrying out inspection. But have they looked for the right things? I think this is a very critical issue. As regards the um. State of children uh in the home ha- have these inspectors try to understand. You have to understand that many of the children are infants, some of them uh do not have speech yet. So they have to look at uh many dimensions, including uh their physical condition. Uh their uh daily um. Their uh daily routine, etc. So I have checked. The, I've looked at the checklist and it is very similar to the one for managing. Residential care homes for adults. Of course, uh for elderly persons, they might have more illnesses. And so the records may uh contain more information on the uh illnesses of the. Uh elderly. Now, we do understand that there are loopholes in our monitoring system. Or you can call that blind spots. And these are things we have to reflect on and uh make up for. I think uh there's one point rather important. Whether we're talking about a licensing inspections or uh inspections to ensure service quality. And even a training for our staff, we should reviewed all these to ensure that we. Uh, they can discharge their duties uh more properly. Perhaps we should boost their training in certain regard so that they can uh spot the anomalies. As we all know, we have two, three thousand service units and um inspections must be effective. I think there are several areas you should further consider. First, the carers. Whether we talk about the elderly and children, they need care. Their psychological well-being should be taken care of. And if you just rely on the S W D to monitor the performance or quality of care. Then I'm afraid that uh this will be just the, the same. You are going round around in circles if you ask S W D to review. Uh how you can better monitor the surfaces of these homes. I hope you can set up an independent committee so you can carry out an in-depth investigation. And propose rectification measures. I'm sure members are not here to blame anyone. Now, if you do not conduct an independent inquiry, then members may have no choice but to do our own. So I hope you understand. We have a motion here. Uh, please, uh print out the, please project the wording. Of the motion is proposed by the Deputy Chairman, Mister Tang Kapiu. Now, uh all of us already read the motion. Now, uh motions have, notice have to be given. Uh for a motion two days prior to the meeting. And as a result, many members have failed to um move motions this time. But then, can members amend the motion? Uh, I'm afraid we cannot um waive that requirement. For notice. Alright, can you see it? Or do I have to read it out? Perhaps I should uh ask the clock to explain. I understand that the chairman has agreed that this motion can be dealt with. And if unless members of objection. But then if you would like to move an amendment, it has to be done in writing. Uh, we only have six minutes to go before the end of the meeting. Alright, so no one can make an amendment. So we, the words are not logical. Can you read it out? No, oh, alright, I I didn't want to uh print it out for men members. Uh with regard to the serious uh child abuse incidents uh at R C H. We express, this panel expresses is anger and shock. And uh we would like to censure uh the lack of monitoring by H K S B C. And the performance of the administration in monitoring. R C H is extremely disappointing. We urge the administration to prosecute the perpetrators and uh penalize. Actually, S B C should also improve the professional training and um remuneration. And integrity of childcare workers. It should also enhance support for foster families to encourage uh. Um, members of the public to provide foster care for children who need them. I'm showing attention to uh go into debate of this motion. Anything from you, Mister Tik Chi Yun? I agree to the motion by and large, but then some of the wording is rather vague. But uh for punishment, a penalty to the relevant organization, what does that involve? Uh just a few words of warning, a censure, or um uh in revoking the registration? I think it will be for members to um. Uh to uh judge. Well, I am not talking about debate. I just want to know his uh in. Well, I am not talking about debate. I just want to know his uh in original intent. Now, if you feel the um feel that the motion is not clear enough, you. Are entitled to your, to make up, to make up your own mind. I don't intend of a debate on this motion. All right, we'll now put this motion to the vote. How about we use our voting machine or rather or no, by show of hands, okay? Those who are for the motion, please raise the hands. Please count the number of hands. All right, only members can vote on this motion. Secretariat, please verify. The status of uh those who have raised their hands, all right? Number of votes or hands for the motion. Steady, please, fourteen-four. Those who oppose the motion, please raise the hands, zero, abstention, one. All right, the motion is passed. So I hope the administration can note this. A O B. Prior to the meeting. We receive two proposals to set up subcommittees. They will be formally discussed at our next regular meeting. If uh there are other suggestions from members to set up subcommittees. Do write them in and then uh we can discuss them at our regular meeting. If uh there is no other A O B, thank you very much for your attendance. May I wish you a very prosperous new year.